I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do a roll call please.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. For approval of the agenda.
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, takes us down to a personal appearance, Mr. and Mrs. Donna Rapp of 745 Gettinger Street are here to speak to the board and to myself. The floor is yours.
Okay, I'm here to not change anything, just a little bit of a misstep, I would say, in the process of permitting, so I'm not putting any blame on anybody, it's just there was some omissions, I think that maybe ought to be noted and plugged. In the startup of this whole issue, my neighbor put in a, for a permit to install a above-ground pool, and the permit was let, and from what I gather, it didn't have the site plan utilities marked on it, and it clearly states here, "Site plan showing setbacks proposed, full placement, all existing buildings, outbuildings, easements, and utilities," and that's where things kind of fell apart, because the utilities weren't defined until too much later in this whole process. And so that's number one, did not include the utility site plan, clearly stating where they were at relative to the pool installation. And this really set the stage for a sequence of errors or missteps, and not only a part of the omission in the permit, but also the homeowner takes some responsibility in this also. So my first recommendation would be to defer permitted approvals until, you know, the site plan is part of that diagram that is usually submitted to get the approval. And so also, it's not the city's position, I know, to define those undergrounds, it's the responsibility of the homeowner, but you'll see, things didn't go quite right there. Anywhere, people need to be aware of where the property lines are at, and that wasn't the case. Now, as things started out, the homeowner actually ordered a 15-foot pool, it wasn't available, so the installer convinced him to put an 18-foot in. Fine. Well, he even asked the installer come up and took things over, but the utilities had yet been defined, so that probably wouldn't have worked out, but maybe they got a better definition of where the property lines were at. And it turned out that the underground utilities wasn't marked until two days before the installation. And of course, that whole misstep set up, again, these errors to occur. Dig right, I don't know what the reasons were for the delay, but there was ample time to get those underground, it didn't come until too late. So when the installer comes in to install the pool, and the underground's there, and they realize that the pool, according to the permit, was supposed to be 10 feet from our property line, ends up being a foot and a half because of that underground utility. The pool was supposed to be in the center of the yard, and it was over the utility. And so the homeowner and the installer made a miscalculation, a gross one, in where the property line was at. See, these two properties just, you know, join together, the two vacant, mine's a vacant lot and his is his backyard. So the idea would be to check known property lines before the permit application, no guessing or estimating, and if that five foot is not available at that time, then go for a variance before the install. Of course, that's going to delay things in this case, and now we're back in, we're bucking up against the end of the summer, because initially, there was a six-week delay in time order to install. So two things in the proper order. Now, there was a couple of suggestions made to try to rectify this thing, and one was to submit an insurance claim against the installer's liability insurance to move the pool, not simple but doable. It was rejected. Remove the 18-foot pool, install the 15-foot pool. Now, the 15-foot pool would have worked despite the location of the underground, it would have worked, it would have fit in that area. Now, the homeowner even brought the installer up to look at it, give his take on it, and he said, "No, I'm not going to move it." Suggested a variance, and that was the same recommendation by the city after the inspection. Naturally, the variance is the path of least resistance. So the homeowner and I went before the Board of Adjustment, he requested the variance, and I voiced my concerns, not holding to the five-foot offset. The variance was approved. Now, in the case of the variance, later to the homeowners, I felt it would be important to include the variance judgment criteria, was the basis for deciding, and can be, if there's an appeal, take it before the circuit court. We didn't find that information out until the meeting. I just felt, looking back, it would have been good to have known that criteria and what the consequences would be if there is an appeal. Of course, circuit court is expensive, and more likelihood that's not going to happen because lawyers are expensive. So one of the questions I have, given the haphazard way the pool was installed, it could have very easily been one to two foot on the other side of my lot. Can somebody tell me what the recourse would have been at that time? Is that still a variance issue? Or is there some other recourse? Because at that point, first question is, does it go before the Board of Adjustment?
I didn't understand the question, but generally, we're in a public comment type period, so I'm not sure, but especially if there's a brand motivation, I would just suggest that you provide whatever information you want to provide.
Well, it didn't happen. I'm just asking you, if it did happen, what would be the course of action?
See, I didn't really even understand the question. Are you asking me a hypothetical, things were different? Yeah, I'm not a good answer.
Yes. I'm just looking for who to go rectify that situation, not that that's going to happen, but maybe it never has happened. But the way this thing went about, it could have very well got flipped on my side, a foot and a half, being so close. So, does it go before the Board of Adjustment?
I want to say something too. I think, okay, the permit was issued wrongly to begin with, it did not have the utilities on it. I really would like to see, when permits are issued, that the person signs off, the issues the permit, that they have given all the instructions, they have done everything, that they have the site plan, they show the utilities and everything when they sign off, and that they've given all the instructions to the next person who, when they give the permit, that, okay, if it's not capable of doing what's on this permit, you stop at that point and come back and get a variance, instead of getting a variance after you do the work. See what I'm saying? I don't think that's asking too much.
In an ideal world.
But I really think there should be some signing off on things, so it's done correctly, because the whole thing started with the permit being issued wrong, and then whenever we went to the Board of Adjustments, which we didn't know what we were getting into at that point, they basically, I even asked the question, how would you like it against, okay, how would you like it if it was your property? We can't talk about that, but then when they voted on it, there was a person there who said, "Well, I've got a pool and it would be hard to move." It's the same thing she was putting her opinion in.
No, it's a bias.
I'm sorry, it was like a kangaroo court, actually, to me.
No, it was just, it was a bias.
It was definitely a bias, and, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it now, the pool is there, we're good with the neighbors, but we don't want to see this happen to anybody else, and if it goes to a Board of Adjustments, the people should know what is there, and that they have to go to the circuit court the next move, so that they can prepare properly before they come before them. Is that asking too much?
No.
So. So just two things, and that is, in the permitting process, the site plan, basically, and of utilities, and then in the case of the variance, knowing the criteria, I don't know, there's three or four of them, I don't remember what they were, I guess offset is one of them, in advance, so you can kind of prepare which ones of these things can attack, one, two, or three, or whatever. So that, and then the, going forward, if there's an appeal process, it has to go through the circuit court, just to know what you're up against. So that's I have, and like I said, this is just to inform, and maybe plug a few holes. I don't blame it on anybody, this thing just got started on the wrong foot, and here we are. All right? So I have.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. If there's any questions?
I have a lot of the public comments.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take us to our C Administrator's report.
We have an updated reported receipts, we'll be receiving RFPs from auditing firms next Thursday, and then reviewing them as soon as possible. Does anybody want to be a part of that review process? I mean, they'll be stacked otherwise. Oh, finger pointing, but I don't see any volunteers.
Joe, you say you'd like to be a part of that?
I can't.
I think that's what I heard.
No, you didn't.
I heard something coming from you.
I did too. What Joe's name down there?
So Pam Sue and I will look at them and then have a recommendation that we write to the board.
I trust that opinion.
Houselet Hazardous Waste Collection, Saturday, going to be at the recycling center on Highway 61, starts at eight, runs till noon. Wholesome is putting this together, and they've gotten money from solid waste regional, or the Southeast Regional Solid Waste Management District, that's a good thing, usually pretty well attended, so get there early. And then we're hoping for street overlays next week, I need to get an update tomorrow, hoping Monday, but it'll depend on how far they've gotten this past week in St. Francis County. So we'll let everybody know on Facebook as soon as we find out.
Question.
In regards to their recycling waste collection thing, and Chief's not here, so I'll put you on the spot, are we going to have extra officers on patrol for that because?
For what?
For that recycling thing going on at the recycling center? Because they had traffic backed up quite a ways, and we couldn't get in and out of our neighborhood.
We can afford the officers, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can accommodate, but we're just short step.
I know Lynn Drive was hard to get in and out of, so was St. June, St. Erich Road.
Like I said, we're still down two officers, so we're struggling a little bit, but we'll do our best we can.
Where does the city limit spend there?
No fault.
Okay. On that side of the street.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Go. Takes us to our staff report, Steve.
Good evening.
Like Happy said, hopefully, we're getting some asphalt on the ground next week. Our crews were able to get started on the 7th street water line this week, I don't know if anybody's been up there or seen Facebook posts on it. As of today, we were about 240 feet across the line, we got about 200 more feet to go. So it's going to be tight getting that in, both will work our all day tomorrow, and then Monday, I would assume, we will be completed, ready for a pressure test. So definitely be done likely by mid next week, so that'd be a good deal for that line. Lots of brush coming down to the brush site, we've already seen leaves starting to show up, street sweeper's been running, did lots of cleanup in the downtown area for festivals and the upcoming parades.
I got a question.
Yes.
I noticed on your report, you're doing cleaning creeks, creeks out, or?
Yeah, weeds along creek banks.
Just the weeds along creek, okay.
Yeah, it looks good. We got it along market there.
Yeah, we got the ones on market, South Gaberry Creek, a portion of them down by the trestle, did lots of tree trimming up around the school as well, and I was notified of another one on the.
That was good, because I did, now I saw the truck over here, and even on Mark with the, those little low-water bridges going in there, because that's what caused us a bunch of problems the last time there was debris in it prior to the terrain.
Along with the creek list, the subway ditch, that was cleaned up as well.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Steve, you have a note about the Robinwood lift station requiring a substantial amount of work to be able to operate as design.
Yes.
Is that due to some damage or poor design? I'm just curious where's.
Both.
Okay.
Age, poor design.
Okay.
It's pretty much run to the end of its life expectancy. We've tried to replace components in the control panels, we can't get it to run reliably, consistently. We can get it to run for a couple of days, and then we can't, and we've replaced all the power from the pole to the facility, and right now, we're waiting on more components, so. Thanks.
One other question.
Yes.
The river view up there, no maintenance again, or they're not doing what they need to do?
No.
So what do we do about that?
Uh.
Just let everybody suffer on the way down the end, or?
So it's not affecting us at this point, it's affecting them. The amount of grease that gets built up in this catch basin that they designed and built, it's basically filtering all of their waste, and we're just getting the clear water from the facility. They're doing nothing right now but hurting themselves.
Okay.
So.
Because it had been a problem with all that stuff coming down through the lines.
Yeah, they're containing it now.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's on that, as long as it's not affecting us.
They need to maintain, maintain their containment unit, but that's not being done.
Can we legally send them a letter and officially tell them at such and such time, if you don't take care of this, we're going to take care of it, and it's going to cost you?
Yeah, and some of the, some of the things that have been brought to my attention with that station is, when they do go clean a little bit of it out, they're piling it up on, in the yard right next to the station, or if there's a bucket of rags, or grease, or rubber gloves, they just leave it out there, and then the wind blows it when it dries out, and so. My wastewater plant operator, Kyle Meeks, actually drives by and picks that stuff up sometimes, so.
Might be worth it.
I think we need to send them something, and this is the deal.
So we'll have to see how that would work, it would be probably a lean against the property, we have to ask them to abate it, and then, you know, we can't, we can't.
We can notify them of it right now and stuff, and tell them.
But it isn't affecting our system yet.
Correct.
It's going to affect them negatively at some point.
Well, if their system fails, it's going to affect us.
Yes.
I'd rather be proactive on it than wait, you know.
Sending just a warning, just like, hey?
That's why I say, I say we send them a letter.
Yeah, send them a picture of the stuff piled out there, that's a violation already.
And, I mean, we can, we can call the owner of the facility, and he'll contact his maintenance guy, and he'll have it sucked out by Randy O'Neil or someone else that does that kind of work, but that's where it stops. If they were to do daily maintenance on it, go out there and clean their, clean their screen, it wouldn't happen, so.
Educate them.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric had an emergency tonight, couldn't be here, so we all have his report. Any questions? Bob, you got a question?
Well, not for him, but I've got a question for Dave, I didn't know if now's the time.
Well, I guess you could, well, he's not on the agenda, so no. I don't think so. After the meeting. Okay, very good. All right. Any committee reports?
I've got a good one for parks, actually. Yesterday, the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Program did a work service day in Valley Springs Park, they do a leadership program throughout the year, and chose the parks to be this month's, and so probably had about 15 people out there, including Jeff and Bart with the Alliance Parks, and Steve was out there and made sure all the rakes and wheelbarrows that we could need, and the gloves and stuff were there, they did a good job at that, and just a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and those in the leadership program for making the parks a part of it, we pulled off about two trailer loads of just fallen debris from the trees and stuff, and got some molds put out there, and it looks great. And so thank you to Alliance as well for figuring out with that stuff.
Super. Well, thank you very much, that's awesome. Is there any public comments? You passed everything off to the.
I did.
You got ahead of me, good. So that takes us to the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Takes us into, at 6:22, we'll have a public hearing. We will, the mayor and the board will hold a public hearing to consider a special use permit request for S&amp;W Storage LLC that will allow a self-storage facility at 11307 Save-A-Lot Drive in a C1 general commercial district.
So on August 18th, does the mayor know that S&amp;W Storage applied for a special use permit to operate climate-controlled self-storage facilities at 11307 Save-A-Lot Drive, filing fee received, notices were mailed, notices to the applicants, the adjoining property owners, to the police chief, and to the fire chief on August 23rd. Police chief responded back August 25th, fire chief August 24th, no concerns, meeting notices was sent to the media August 29th, and published in the paper August 31st. Planning and zoning held their meeting September 1st and approved the special use permit for recommendation to you, and here we are this evening.
Are there any questions?
There's like a big manhole back there on that property and stuff, I think it was, was it something natural or something?
I know of no manhole back though, there's a big ditch along the back of the property and a large swale in front of it.
There's a big manhole back there. I bailed it for years and stuff, but.
You bailed it?
Yeah, I used to.
No, bail, yeah. Cut the A on the property.
I'm not.
Right.
The field behind it, or that property?
That property.
Oh, okay.
So is that, I mean, and is there other utilities on that property?
There's utility easements, and there's a stormwater easement.
Okay. So a question of building over those items.
You can't build over those items.
Whether it's a building, or a swimming pool, or anything, you can't build over a utility easement?
You can't build over a stormwater easement, is that what, I don't know, I'm sure if that's what you're asking.
Well, are a utility easement, electric, water?
Are you asking about a pool or a building?
Either and or.
Well, you can't put a pool over an electric line, but that's not what we're talking about here right now.
Right. Answered my question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, we saw that drawing at planning and zoning, you said that.
The site plan?
The site plan.
It is not, and she, the applicant has discussed one building now instead of two because it was not going to fit, the applicant submitted a preliminary site plan, but special use is just for the use, not for the placement of the building, and that's what's approved for your consideration here tonight, but she has come to me and discussed a single building instead of two, so that it can fit on there properly with parking access and that type. Other questions?
So I guess we have no objection to it? Nobody's here?
No idea. She's on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? We'll close the public hearing at 6:26. Takes us to old business, Bill Number 4509, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2022 budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases. Motion to approve.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, Bill Number 4509 now becomes ordinance 4431.
Thank you. Takes us to second reading of Bill Number 4510, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, approving the annual budget for fiscal year 2023, and approving an effective date. Another approval.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson, yep. Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, Bill Number 4510 now becomes ordinance 4432.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to go into executive closed session for to discuss real estate matters.
Motion to go into executive session.
Hold on a second.
A roll call, please.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Motion carries at 6:28.[1735.13]
I told you. Ready to come back in?
What is, um, right, that paper guy out there, did you see?
There he is. Ready to roll on now? Oh, we don't need a motion to move on. Let Mark say it.
I'm making motions, let's get allowed, we haven't gotten them yet. I saw that look earlier, like.
Well, it, uh, well, it takes us to new business, uh, bill number forty-five eleven, an ordinance approving change order number two to the contract with Vern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri on the North Fourth Street and Main Street Creek Crossing Project, an amount of six thousand and one hundred and forty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion.
Motion for a second reading of bill number forty-four eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to the second reading of bill number forty-five eleven, an ordinance approving a change order number two to the contract with Vern Bowman Construction Company of the St. Genevieve, Missouri on the North Fourth Street and Main Street Creek Crossing Project, an amount of six thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clagghorn?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number forty-five eleven now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-three.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-five twelve, an ordinance approving a special use permit for S and W Storage LLC that will allow a self-storage facility at eleven three zero seven Save-A-Lot Drive in a C-one general commercial district.
Motion to, or second.
Who had the first?
Mark.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading.
Second.
Lost my train of thought here. Roll call, please. No, I'm sorry. Sitting next to you.
We're giving the second reading now, Mayor.
Oh, and second reading. So this is the second reading of, uh, bill number forty-five twelve. Well, all in favor of that? Did you say that? No, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
All right, an ordinance approving a special use permit for S and W Storage LLC that will allow a self-storage facility at eleven three zero seven Save-A-Lot Drive in a C-one general commercial district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clagghorn?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number forty-five twelve now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-four.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-five thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the city, with the St. Genevieve Industrial Development Corp. Corporation. An approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion for a second reading of bill forty-five thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number forty-five thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a co- cooperative agreement for the St. Genevieve Industrial Development Corporation.
An approval.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clagghorn?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number forty-five thirteen now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-five.
Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-five fourteen, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August twelfth, twenty-ten.
An approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion for a second reading of bill forty-five fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill forty-five fourteen, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, Missouri Corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August twelfth, twenty-ten.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Clagghorn?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Arbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's, bill number forty-five fourteen now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-six.
Thank you, is there any other business?
No.
Uh, meeting is adjourned.
If you don't mind our presence.
Need him for work today?
No, we're good, thanks, Steve.
All right.
Stormwater review area and straightened.
You missed that from here.
I don't know, did you do your homework?
Yes.
Okay, then maybe, maybe you have a lot of questions.
I'd like to have approval of the, uh, work session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's all yours, Happy. All right, so we've approved the IDC agreement, that takes away storm drainage area number six that we had planned on, uh, having reviewed. So I do know if there was another area of town that you wanted us to look at?
Have a good night.
Or we can expand drainage area number two to include more of the rosary subdivision because it does all dump into that area, um, from Cedar down to Sycamore and then over to the hospital. So we could expand that area. I don't know if you've received any other complaints from any other sections of town. And, but I think those are the, these are the areas that we've had the most, uh, feedback on, so.
Thank you.
And they can amend the work order that they had sent to us to include a, a larger drainage area number two. And that's the shoes, um, shoes ditch line.
Well, it certainly makes more sense to expand that than to locate another, a whole new area.
I mean, that, the order that goes to shoes comes from the hospital, so.
Yeah, there you go. So we can take it up to. No, you're fine. Take it up to. Good gosh.
Who did it, is that yours?
Yep. Ah, some more of that. Anyway, so we would take it down, um, Cedar Lane and then over to the cul-de-sac. That's kind of where it splits, works its way back towards the hospital, um, and the cul-de-sac. It's not Sycamore, what is that? What's on, what's the cul-de-sac on the end?
Dead end?
Spruce.
Spruce.
Spruce, thank you. I knew one person.
I was studying the map.
So, we'll, we'll see, we'll see where it breaks, but it should be, uh, should be by spruce and then by the hospital.
And that's the, um, area number two.
Yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. All right, and then we'll just wait. Um, if there's something, somebody else comes forward, let, let us know and we can, we can add another area on. So that was the stormwater question. The street question is, we're not going to do that section of Fourth Street until we, uh, Dave Van Laer who was here, they're gonna be doing the engineering, getting us a price on the engineering and then move forward with trying to figure out what to do with that section of Fourth Street that is gonna have pounding if we don't do something. Uh, so that's about ten thousand, eleven thousand square feet of, uh, of area, uh, so. And try to look for something comparable, another section of street that we could work on that, uh, just replace that section with another section. I can't find anything that's comparable to it. Only thing that was close was our parking lot out here and we're just not ready to.
It's a basketball court.
How many dollars is that?
Um, we're figuring about, so it depends on which price you're basing it on. The original price would be about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, with the new amount, it's probably gonna end up being about fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. So what we do, what I've, what, what my proposal is, is to hold off until next year. I mean, it just ends up sitting in, in as a part of the reserves of the street department and then we can look at streets, which we'll do next month or in November, start picking the streets that we want to bid on for the next round of overlay, of asphalt overlays. And that one will actually also come back because we hope to have the stormwater done by that time, too.
Have we ever really seen a decrease in cost of asphalt?
No, and it's been a major increase this year because of oil prices.
I said decrease.
Yeah, I know, I've never, never seen that.
Oh, yeah, it came down for a while there, because we weren't doing concrete because it was so high, but now it's come back down. Now we're doing laptop again.
Well, that was my question, you know, if it has a chance of coming back down, then might be better waiting, but.
I mean, you figure we're not gonna do this next project till the middle of next summer, so, or end of next summer. So we have yet to do one before we get to the end of our budget year, just in the last two years.
Yeah, can't we be a little more, uh, strict with our, uh, contracts and stuff and say it's gotta be done such and such time? It seems like we get pushed off and we're at the end and if they get time.
We decide so late, though, but then this last thing, if they would have pushed that through, then we'd have pounding and everything and we'd have to tear it up anyway. So it's actually.
They'd have seen it, same thing.
But one thing we probably could have done if it was sooner, even though it was a small areas, uh, Valley Springs road, concrete roads are seeing a lot of trouble with cracking and stuff, so there's some sections that need to be kind of cut out and, um.
So that was gonna be, that's gonna be.
So it's.
That'll have to be a contractor. We don't have the equipment to do that.
Yeah, we don't have the time to do that.
Finish crack sealing progress.
Budget schedule.
Well, we need to crack seal that, um, yes.
Most of it still looks good, but part of it.
Yeah, it's beginning to deteriorate.
Bollinger's, uh, had that issue where the, um, the roads cracked and, um, uneven now and it's chipping away at the curb that's protecting their driveway and stuff, so that doesn't get fixed. And so I figured that might be a, a smaller cost, but we don't have the time on the budget year, too.
Right, we don't have the time ourselves or the manpower really to, to effectively do it, but we can hire somebody to do that, to do that type of repair.
Not in a handful of days.
I mean, before the end of the budget year, no.
Yeah, right, because otherwise it goes to next budget and it gets roped back in. So it's, that's why I'm kind of commenting off of what Bob was saying, is like, the streets always come in at the kind of last month of our budget year, and so there's really not a whole lot of time to make recalculations with, um, with what we're doing.
And part of that is also because we do the water line, we're doing water lines or on the route to the fair and, I mean, there's, there's, there's things that delay us, that's one of the things.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we could probably just use maintenance funds if we want to get out and, and do that section in, uh, Valley Springs. I don't think that's, you know, that's not some, that's something that we can, we can use that money for.
Yeah, I was just thinking about, you know, with the small section of road, the cost of it. Like, there's other things that we could do potentially if we thought about it, we just don't have the time within the spending calendar to do it.
Well, the only way to fix that is if we took our carryover, our, our amount this year, carried it over to next year and start the projects in the spring instead of waiting until.
Well, if, if you look at the difference between the concrete, concrete work that we have done and then the asphalt, we did the concrete earlier because they could get to it in April, right? Yeah, um, we could do, we could add this into our regular maintenance program, but it's concrete, so they could do it anytime. Just have to, you know, worry about getting, and doing it in freezing weather. So, I mean, that would be nothing to, to include. And if, if there's other bad areas over there, we could do that.
Mm-huh, that's good.
It's just we want to do all of the asphalt paving at one time because of mobilization.
Yeah. Right.
No, rolling it over to next year sounds good.
We'll do, all right, we'll do that. That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
It's all we have to work, surely.